Join me for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation.
And we're going to go into executive session, but I just want to comment first that as I started to say, sadly, a longtime member of the community Fred Kelly passed away. Fred was, he served two long multiple terms as selectman in the eighties and then in the time when the town needed some more leadership came back in the nineties. He actually was, you know, he appointed me to the police department in 1985. And but he had, he had a life of good health, he had four, four, four very successful children. His wife passed away a few years ago. And I know his funeral is from Edwards Funeral Home. But I just want to acknowledge his service and just want to make that, make that point known.
Yeah, for sure. Fred was a great member of the community for forever. I worked for him too. I think most people in town worked for him.
Pretty much, right? One way or the other, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Right, I'm gonna move that we move into executive session for purpose two pursuant to Master General law thirty A section twenty one A two to conduct strategy sessions and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct, conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief contract, and I so move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Tenio, aye.
God or die.
Shout out, aye.
Ruko's, aye.
Marali, aye.
Kim, is Laura joining us?
You muted.
Okay, so, okay. I'm going to email you guys a another link because I can't do a breakout session because she created the meeting.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah. Hold on, let me just make sure I'm right on that. Yep. Yep, so I'll, I'll just, I'll put this meeting on hold and so we'll be back. Please don't, don't anybody, you're not going to leave. So, okay. We'll come back to this as soon as we finish with the executive session. As soon as we finish with the executive session.
Lonnie, do you have my personal email? Lonnie, do you have my personal email?
What is it? What is it?
Cindy Amara seven one three at gmail dot com. Cindy Amara seven one three at gmail dot com.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Can you send it there, please? Can you send it there, please?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks. Should we exit this meeting, Kim? Should we exit this meeting, Kim? You're muted. You're muted.
Um, yeah, we should leave this meeting and join the other one. Um, yeah, we should leave this meeting and join the other one.
Okay, bye. Okay, bye.
Mike, we're back in regular session.
Okay. All right, welcome back, everybody. So the next thing on the agenda is to talk about an intermunicipal agreement. Shared fire chief. So I'd be looking for a motion. As as written here in number three.
I move to enter into an intermunicipal agreement pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section four A, by and between the town of Mendon, Massachusetts and the town of Blackstone, Massachusetts, from July twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. All right, any discussion? All right, so just just for everybody who's who's listening, wondering what's going on. The the fire chief in Blackstone is retiring. And it's not easy to find another fire chief. And we have a contract with ours, but we didn't want him to leave. And the proposal was made that we share the fire chief with the town of Blackstone. So Blackstone is sharing, is is actually bearing the extra cost. The chief has agreed to to put in the time necessary to help. Help their town along as their as their fire chief as well. There is nothing in our current contract about ours. So the chief has assured us that, you know, he's got other members that are that's being that are being trained up, that are taking leadership role. He says he can, he can do both of them, and we've been studying this for a while. So we're ready to enter into this intermunicipal agreement. So that we'll have a shared fire chief with Blackstone. It's going to bring a lot of positives to to the town. So there's no other discussion? I'm looking all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and it's unanimous. Now we have. Yeah, now we have article number four here, which is the actual shared fire chief contract.
I move to approve the shared fire chief position contract between the town of Mendon, Massachusetts and town of Blackstone, Massachusetts contingent on Blackstone signing the IMA. Second.
Pause, that's, this is you approving the position, not the contract. So the motion should just be considering position of shared fire chief. So it exists.
Got it, I move to approve the position of shared fire chief, sorry, the ship. I move to approve the shared fire chief position between the town of Mendon, Massachusetts and town of Blackstone, Massachusetts contingent on Blackstone signing the IMA. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. And then.
I move to approve the shared fire chief contract from July twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand twenty-four contingent upon Blackstone signing the IMA.
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Why don't we?
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Why don't we circle back to the board of health issue? She's not here yet. So let's talk about year-end transfers.
I don't have any. This is just a placeholder. I can stop. We might have some even next week. Let me give a brief update. While we, we are, we are proudly have switched over to our new financial software. A new chart of accounts, new everything, which is amazing. And part of that is us closing out our old system, right, year-end anyway, but and some of it is starting brand-new in the new system. But everyone has been trained this week, which is great, or they're in the process tomorrow. And so part of that is, we might have some journal entries, but typically the accountant handles those, they're not usually held as transfers, but if there's anything that's unusual, I'll bring it back to the board. But so far, everything looks pretty straightforward, so it's pretty exciting.
Right.
For those of us who like that kind of thing. Not that exciting to you guys, but a new financial system in here, are you kidding me? It's taken, what, fifteen years? It's amazing.
All right, Tom. All right, thanks. Let's, let's talk about the next, the only issue left here was the board of health vacancy. For those of you, if you weren't aware. The the member of the board of health who just was re-elected, Andy Fisk, had some time concerns and other issues and resigned. So I checked with the with the town clerk. And there there are a couple of different ways we can handle it. We can have a special election. Which is not necessary, it's less than, you know, it's it's less than a year, we can go with just two members of the board and leave it vacant. Or she said that we can appoint somebody to fill in until the next town election. And then we would just have two opens, two open seats to elect rather than one. So I reached out to the board of health and also reached out to to a previous member of the board of health, Joyce Gilmore. I think you all saw in your email, Joyce, you know, Joyce was the health agent, she's a registered nurse, she went to school to learn all about Title V. She was a real resource for the town through the through the through the eighties and nineties and got us into a recycling program. And I reached out to her and and she said she would be willing to fill in as the interim member of the board of health. And I also, I reached out to Tom Thicner and 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 his his compadre Alan about how they felt about it and and they, well, how do you feel about that, Tom?
Evening, everyone. I'm Tom, for those of you who don't know me. I see you back and congratulations. Yeah, Mike reached out to me the other day about the opportunity that, you know, to fill the position. And when he mentioned the candidate we're talking about, Joyce Gilmore, I was personally very excited about that. Experience to the board of health, he's had many past years with board of health. And I did have a conversation with Alan, subsequently the other board member, and he too was very happy with the. From our perspective, we'd be very pleased to have Joyce, you know, join the board of health, if that was so deemed to be the decision going your behalf.
Okay, and the the issue I asked about any kind of time limits of posting or requirements, there is no, there is no law, according to town clerk, with where we can't appoint a replacement as soon as they're available. There is a Mendon Select Board, apparently there is a forty-five-day posting policy that we have for appointed individuals, not elected individuals. You know, when we had a vacancy on the we had a vacancy on the water board, you know, we appointed somebody as as the interim. So I guess what I would do, just, I'd be looking for a motion first to sus- to to suspend any requirement to post this open, you know, this resignation of this position for forty-five days, that we could appoint somebody immediately. So I'd be looking for a motion to do that first, and then I'd be looking to.
Well, hang on. This just happened a couple of days ago.
Right?
I'm not against Joyce by any stretch of the imagination. We've put it out to nobody else in the community for this position, except one phone call from one person to keep to. From this, from this board to to put all this together.
It is on the website, but.
All right.
I saw it on the website also.
Yep.
The vacancy, but.
And and the other issue, the other issue with it is when, you know, the, when the the position was open, no one pulled papers, no one wanted to run. And AJ, I mean, Andy.
To do with the appointment of of this, because somebody didn't decide to run against AJ, doesn't mean.
Well, he pulled papers at the at the very end of the, so no, but you're right, there is no, there is a big difference between pulling papers and running, then.
Discussion of of an appointing, appointing a member to an elected seat in this community is a very important position. It's not, again, nothing against Joyce, I'm just talking about the process. So we've had no discussion on this between, as as a board. And we come in to discuss the vacancy on the board of health, and we're now looking to change policies that we have and appoint somebody.
Well, let me be clear, we don't really have a policy about appointing somebody for an elected position.
Okay, so then why do we need to wait?
Thanks, quick interjection here. I would ask, Mr. Thicner, is there a immediate need to have a third person appointed? Because I I probably would prefer not to change wave policy, whether we select it or not.
Right.
So if the board of health can function with a two-member board for forty-five days, then I I would probably not want to waive that restriction and leave it posted on the website, not to your point, maybe even push something out there to say, there is an opening here, if you're, you want to be considered for appointment, come forward, and in forty-five days we make a decision. Does that make sense? I mean, I, but I would defer, if there's an immediate need, like, no, no, I'm like, we've got things we've got to decide tomorrow, and we need, we need three. Then I would, Mike, follow your lead on, you know, a quicker process.
Well, from a board perspective, as you folks, some of you here experienced being part of a three-member board, and then for periods of time not having a third number and only having two, sure, two people could make a decision on on happenings that are going on within the board of health. It would be complimentary and advantageous to have a complete board when we're making certain decisions. We have some situations coming that have to do with new regulations that we're discussing in certain areas. Personally, I would like to have a full board in place to do those types of regulatory, you know, confirmations. Alan and I, you know, we work very well together, and, you know, for the most part, we are on the same page with how we handle things. But is it a benefit to have a complete board? It is a benefit. Could we function without a third person for a short period of time? We probably could, but.
When, when are these issues coming up that you're talking about, the the decisions about that you mentioned?
Yeah, so we have, well, a few issues that have actually been in discussion for quite a while. Things such as dumpster regulations, possible regulations with regard to animals. Most recently, we've had the discussion of some situations in town with rooster. But we're considering an actual broad-based type of permitting or regulation, which would be the keeping of animals, which we feel might be a better way to go, as opposed to just creating one-for-one type of animal, because there are other type of livestock that people also have in the community.
You working with the agricultural commission?
We are, and as a, as a, kudos to them, they actually stepped forward when we had some issues crop up with roosters recently, and they actually had come to us and promoted a process, a permitting application for roosters, which, which is really not very restrictive. It has some nice guidelines to it. It's really just about helping people, if you're going to venture into something like this, what you'd want to do is the best practices, and what's your recommendation? Because if you're on a wide-open piece of land, you know, four or five acres, you're probably not going to have a problem, but in a couple of places where we're having a problem, there, what you might call a little more densely populated residential areas, although there's some space, but you know, there's a we want to consider the housing element, how they house them, as opposed to being kind of free, free and open. And it's, you know, basically with the roosters, it has to do with the noise. Now, the other regulation we're potentially looking at is dumpster regulations as well. We have a couple of issues in the community, unfortunately, where we have some issues, and in lieu of dumpster regulations, it kind of creates a little bit of a problem for us to act, although we have found some mechanism recently that we think we can actually act on or utilize as the board of health, without actually creating the regulation, where we can take a, take the approach. We're also looking at private well regulations, although we have some in place now, they need to be updated.
Just to put my addification, when you talk about regulations, when the board decides what, I mean, you sound like macro policies, which are good things.
Correct.
You've got to find stuff.
Yeah.
What's the process to implement them? Is it just your board, the board of health, saying this is the new policy, does it need to go to town meeting, does it need to go to the state, et cetera, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, in some cases, a public hearing would have to be required. I don't know if in the cases of what we're talking about from a private well regulation, that's required, because they already exist, we'd be updating and basically modifying them a bit.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, to land it to your point, the timing, it seems like these are more longer-term efforts, more strategic in the sense that it's a three-to-six month type of process for your board to come to a point where you'd be having a public hearing? Is that fair or no?
I would think less time, because we've actually been discussing these issues actually already for the past three to six months, so we're actually a little bit behind our timeframe what we wanted. We'd actually hoped to pull the trigger at the end of two thousand twenty-one on a couple of these things. The newest one would have been the rooster, but the other two, we're kind of hoping to have completed, so we're kind of behind.
Are there any issues that you're hoping to bring to the special town meeting in November that would need preparation?
I don't believe what we're proposing would rise to that need to do that, although I would need to get verification, you know, personally.
Are there any hearings for any, any permitting or anything that the board of health would do that's coming up?
Well, we have a board of health meeting in the evening, seven o'clock, it's our regular. We meet.
Hi, Joyce. Come, take a seat.
Side. Hearing. You know, per se.
So beyond the, beyond this, this meeting at seven o'clock, are there other, are there other hearings of permitting, anything that needs to be done in the next forty-five days that can't be delayed?
If they were warranted, they could be delayed, if it turns out that we did need to do a special hearing process. You know, a couple of issues, I'm not sure if that's going to be requirement. We may have the power to simply implement the regulation with proper notification to the public, without actually having a public hearing, you know, for discussion.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, to everybody's point, you know, is it, is it going to hurt anything to delay forty-five days to, even though it might be murky about having about whether we need to wait forty-five days for, you know, for, to to fill a temporarily open position for an elected position? Is there any reason you can't delay making decisions until that forty-five-day period to appoint somebody, or should we consider appointing, appointing somebody sooner?
What decisions need to be delayed, because it's only a two-member board?
Well, I'm, that's what I'm asking. I'm not saying it does, I'm asking the question.
Right.
Well, you're right, we'd have a, probably with the decisions we have pending, and given the mindsets that I know from myself and from my fellow board member, Alan, we're probably in agreement, so we could probably pull the trigger on one, if not both of those regulations. It's always nice to have a, you know, a complete, you know, entity in place when you're making regulations, but.
So Tom, just one other question.
Yeah.
These are open meetings you're having, right? Public can attend. There's no confidentiality in the documents or discussion you're having?
That's correct.
So if it's a citizen who is interested in joining to be appointed in forty-five days, that said person could actually participate in meetings to understand what the questions are, they'd just be a non-voting participant in the meeting, is that right?
Oh, yeah. We've had some pretty lively discussions, all right.
Yeah, my, my natural inclination is to kind of maybe just hold on changing sort of that forty-five-day window, just.
Yeah, might as well.
So I don't want people raising their hand saying, why'd you do that in this case and not that?
Yeah, again, again, I bring it up.
Yeah.
What I'm told is that the regulation, really, it does not apply to to this position, because it's, because it's somebody who just vacated an elected spot. But you know, we have it for a pointer position, so it's not a big deal to to leave it, I'm just, I'm leaving it to the board to make that decision.
Curiosity, where did the forty-five days come from? I mean, that, that seems like a fairly arbitrary length of time. I don't know.
If I remember correctly, the, that appointment piece was chosen so that we had time to advertise locally within the town hall to anybody that was in the community, oh, sorry, that was an employee first that may want an appointed position. Mainly, these were for staffing positions, not necessarily for an appointment to the FinCom, say, right?
Right.
And then, then there was the time that it would be also advertised in, I believe, the central reg-, oh, sorry. In the central register, as well as any local advertising we were doing, such as Town Pride or something like that. So it gave that ample amount of time to do that. And, yeah, again, Joyce, who I had brought up the point when, and I, I'm able of handling the position, I was more bringing up the situation, the process, that it was discussed quickly, we just got the resignation the other day, there was no discussion with the board, and here we were ready to appoint somebody. And, you know, again, it just offered the opportunity for others to maybe come forward that may be interested in the position as well. That's what I.
I was frankly ecstatic that we had somebody who was.
Yeah. My questions and comments have nothing to do with the qualifications for the candidate that's willing to volunteer, so I don't want this to be, you know.
And can you just give us, give us kind of a?
History? Background?
Right. Be great.
Well, as my grandkids say, is this all back in the day? So actually, how I got on the board of health in the beginning was John Gibson was on the board, and he was pumping my septic system. And he said, oh, what do you do? And I said, well, I'm an, I'm a nurse, but I'm an at-home mom. And he said, well, we need a nurse on the board of health, our Mrs. Alair got hit by a car, broke her leg, and she does not want to be on board anymore. So I want you to be on the board. And my husband, in his great wisdom, was coming around the, the area, and he said to me, well, that would be great for you. Love that. And I said, you know, I, he said, you know, there's only night meetings. So I sort of said, okay. So I went down and was on the board of health. In a day, because the meeting was the next day. So as things happen, and I, I know you, most of you sort of know me and know my personality. So we get down there, and they say to me, okay, you have to sign this septic system plan. I'm like, I, I don't know anything about that septic system plan, I don't know anything, I, I'm the nurse, you know? And so long story longer, I didn't sign it, they had enough, they had two other people to sign it, and I was learning. And so they said to me, you know, you can go to school and learn this stuff. So I ended up going to Clark with with John Mazukelli from Milford. We went to Clark, and we ended up doing public health law with the attorney Milton Raichelson, took classes and did that, learned the law, and said, okay, great, that's good. So did that. And then by that time, you know, I was elected, because it isn't elected, as you said, it isn't elected position. So then I was elected. And long story longer, I kept going to school and kept doing things and went to Central New England College after that, because Milton Raichelson kept nagging me to be a lawyer. And I said, no, I'm not going to be a lawyer, I'm a nurse. And so I ended up doing things about botany and stuff that I didn't have in my own degree of nursing is, you know, I had a microbiology. And so then I just kept on moving. And I ended up doing, because of my micro, I ended up doing all the restaurant inspections. And didn't always go over well, because that nobody had ever done that. So, but I did that. And then I ended up doing, because I, I, you know, by this time, actually, my kids were going to school, you know. So I ended up doing a strength show program at the school. I ended up teaching CPR to all the firemen and policemen. And, you know, I just kept on marching and doing these things. And finally, at the end, I ended up being the health agent, because they said, you know, we don't want to do all these things. And so, and by this time, Milton Raichelson called me, because he was keeping track of me. He was like a father. He's doing all these things. And he said, Harvard is having a graduate program for environmental engineering. It's their first program. He said, this is your bag. So I went to Harvard and did that. You know, I was just like doing things. I never got paid or anything. There was, I never got paid, not one penny from the town or anything. But I loved doing it. I loved doing CPR. And, and the guy that owned a restaurant in town, who actually called me the Board of Health bitch, came to me one day and said, knocked at the door and said, you know, I'm really sorry. Because he said, you taught the Heimlich maneuver to my restaurant people, which is what I did, because that's what you do. You know, I'm a nurse, and I want to save lives, and I'm Pollyanna, and blah, blah, blah. He said, an older woman was eating steak in this restaurant, and my, my waiter did the Heimlich on her, and she lived. And he said, I'm really sorry. But he said, you know, everything is great now, right? So we were great friends after that. And, you know, it was just so, and why I stopped being on the Board of Health was because by this time, my kids were going, my son was going to college. I mean, this was, this was over all that period of time, you know, he was going to be in college. So I said to the finance committee, you know what, I need to get paid. You know, I'm doing all these things, and my kids are working, my husband's working, I need to get paid. And he, they said, well, what do you want? I said, you know, I'd be happy with 15,000, you know, because I was doing all these things. And they said, well, let us think about it. And they said, you know what, it's really, we can't do that. I'm sorry. And I said, you know, I understand, you know, I pay taxes, I get it. But I got a job right away, which I was making 10 times almost. So then they said to me, well, you know what, we do want you to do this. It's okay, we'll pay you the 15,000. Because they had to pay for the inspector. It was going to be 60,000 for the restaurant guy, 30,000 for the school thing. It was 10. For, I didn't have a secretary, I never had a secretary, because I did all my own work, because I'm such a, so I said, yeah, sorry.
So, so in my defense about doing this quickly, I had talked, I watched a lot of this happen. I was a kid when some of this happened. So I know Joyce very well and her qualifications. And I also was very sad to see Andy go. But again, it's completely up to you whether we do this now, or we post it and see if there's anybody else.
And I'm, I'm happy to do that. I mean, I just, when we were talking, I said, I said to my husband, because he's like, oh, God.
And I totally respect and understand where you're coming from with processes. And the last thing I would want to do was have you folks feel pressured per se.
And.
I'm not even hung up on the 45-day thing, to be honest. I just want to.
And I, and you know what? I only bring it up because when I asked, is there really a 45-day? And she said, well, no, not really for an elected position. But again, just trying to be in the open. I just wanted to cover all the bases. So.
I, I think that just give the opportunity, just in case somebody else does want to, you know, apply for, as the application is just, again, as we're looking for somebody to volunteer in the position.
Right.
I mean, you've got a couple of qualifications. I mean, obviously, and you've done the job before. So obviously, you can, it's a very easy transition, and it, it makes complete sense to appoint you. I just, in the.
Right. And then when I spoke, and when I spoke to the Board of Health and got their buy-in on it, I just thought this is a no-brainer. But I'll leave it up to you. If somebody wants to make a motion to appoint her now, that's fine. Or we'll just table it for.
I would say this to the board, Tom, if the board feels that it's untenable, I would come back. I mean, we'll, we can fast-track it if we need to, but I mean.
I would say just give it till the next meeting is what I would, is what I would ask. That's all. And I think in between then and now, do you even have another meeting between, before our next?
Well, they're meeting, they're meeting tonight in two minutes.
But I mean, as far as, we have another meeting next week, is really.
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll put it, you know what, we'll put it on for discussion.
And again, I think that, you know, if we can, again, just, this is not that everybody's watching us, but if anybody is interested, just please let us know. And then, again, I don't know that the 45-day thing is.
Do you feel, do you feel the need, though, at minimum, to actually get it out there in a formal advertisement somehow to the town as part of this, or no?
I don't know. I think I see, sorry, is, oh, the town prior was on.
Yeah.
But they're not.
Yeah. Well, Brenda, no, it's Brenda Crowell. She's, she is there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brenda, when, when is the next?
They're not putting it out for a while.
It wouldn't be.
No. Brenda, when is your next, you guys have kind of taken a vacation for the rest of July for the, for the cry to go out, right? Not till August 5th.
Thanks. I mean, is it sufficient not just even post, like internally amongst the town website?
We could put it on the town website and, and actually.
I think it's already on the town.
On the town website. And I'm, and I'm pretty sure that I could actually.
It's on the banner, though, in the town, like that's.
Yes, but I could post, I could post a link on the town Facebook page or the, or the Menden.
Right, maybe the town clerk would post something about that.
Right.
Maybe we can put it under the Menden Board of Health updates.
I think it was under, maybe, yeah, yes, true. I think I saw it maybe Town News. I know I saw it when I was.
They can also put it on the town prior website, website ahead of time. So that would, and yes, that would be great. And if they could get anybody interested before next.
Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Well, I know, but.
Yeah, right.
If we have them in by Tuesday.
But if we can.
Yeah, if anybody, well, yeah, I would guess they maybe could just send an email to the, to the BOS.
Yep.
BOS email address. So if they just go to the link and to the town page, and they can send us an email that they're interested.
Sure.
In being considered for the Board of Health. And otherwise, we can just.
Yeah, I'm not sure, like you said, that, you know, there wasn't a big rush to be elected to it. So we're probably not going to get a huge rush to be volunteering for it.
And I'm going on vacation on the, the week of Monday, the 25th. So, but, I mean, I can do anything with.
Yeah, well.
We didn't tell you about the no-vacation policy at the.
All right. I think we've, so, so are we all agreeing we're going to table this until the next meeting?
That's great.
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
I appreciate the efforts and so forth.
Thank you. Joyce, thank you for stepping up. Thanks, Joyce.
It's what you do when something happens in your face.
I agree.
It's only 10 months, because I certainly don't want to make it my career.
Well, we're appointing you for three years, so.
Yeah, we might, actually, we got enough right here to get it signed. So you may be on the ballot anyways. It might be too late.
We've already, we've already pulled your papers.
We've already pulled your papers, right?
All right.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Oh, wait, sorry, Jane Lowell hasn't, sorry, Jane Lowell.
Jane Lowell had her hand up.
Jane? You're muted, Jane.
Anyway, it was already on the Menden Board a while back, so.
Sorry, could you start over? We couldn't hear you.
I just said that the position, the, the fact that Mr. Fitz resigned was on the Menden Bulletin Board a while back, and so.
Yes. Yeah.
Anyway, so it was there. That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
All right.
All right, you. Thank you, Walt.
Thank you.
Where's the, where's your next meeting? As I think I'm supposed to be at that, too.
After tonight?
No, tonight.
So it's going to be, is it remote or is it?
Tonight's meeting is remote.
Okay, I'll run home and jump on.
I think based on, you know, apparently the policy, I think, if they meet back in the present again, unless that allowance gets extended. We had it till July 15.
Well, well, actually, yeah, while we're talking about it, the, the whole hybrid policy has been continued, continued to the end of the year. And then there has been a, it's going to be made permanent. The state's going to make it permanent, although there is a group that, that complained about requiring it to be permanent, because a lot of cities and towns might not have the equipment. But we have the equipment. So, you know, we're, we're not going to fight. So it's, so basically, we're going to continue with hybrid unless Cindy has some reason that we can't, that we know of. Is she, is she muted?
You're muted, Cindy.
I'm unmuted now. The last I knew, it was not through all the legislature yet, and it's not guaranteed what is going to actually happen. But I haven't looked at anything or read anything since earlier today. The hope is that that is going to be the case, but there has been controversy about what has actually been drafted and what is actually likely to get improved and whether there are going to be amendments. So I think at this point, as far as I'm aware, I can't say with certainty, because I just haven't heard that it has in fact gone through. But I could have missed it today. Earlier today, it was still an open issue, and we were hoping that that would be the case.
But, but, but the current rules for hybrid did get extended till the end of the year, right?
Last, too, there wasn't anything completely in stone through. There were still some issues and some open-ended questions.
Okay.
So I will have to circle back with you and see what's come over my desktop.
Okay. Like I said, what I read was that the, the current exemption, whatever the temporary rule was, was extended till the end of the year, and then they were going to make it permanent after that. And I thought that's what was being discussed, whether that was really.
That is what's being discussed. You're right. That's being, what's being discussed. But I, I just can't tell you with certainty that it has gone through without a hitch.
Okay. All right.
Jane has her hand up again, I think.
Hi, Jane.
Jane, is that hand up again, or is it from a court?
I don't have my hand up.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Night.
So, Lani, this, is this good to go? This, I just got to get.